So therefore I will call it to order. All commissioners aren't present, therefore quorum is present. At this time, we will have the invocation followed by the pledge of allegiance and I will ask Mr. Carl Terman if you will give our invocation please.
That's appropriate. Our gracious heavenly Father, we come before you today with humble hearts and we're thankful, Lord, for the privilege that we have to be able to call upon your great name. We're thankful for the, the promises that you've given us, the blessings that you bestowed upon us. We're thankful for the way that you help us when we ask you and we ask you now to continue to put your hand upon us and help us as we take care of this county business today. Bless these commissioners, touch us, I pray, and everybody that's involved. I pray, God, that you continue to bless our country. Help us, God, to be able to, to look to you and to recognize the fact that you're God and you're the one that's gonna help us. I pray you to keep your hand upon our, our men that are fighting overseas and, and in, in our very country. And I pray that you just continue to bless and touch us and in Jesus' name we ask all these things. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to welcome everybody here. We, uh, want to thank the news media for helping us disseminate the information on how we operate here in the county to the public. At this time, I'd also like to recognize David Anderson. I'm glad to have you back, David. That's your ordeal and, um, I don't know how we operated without you, but we did, but don't make this a habit, okay?
Ah, hope not.
At this time, I will entertain a motion to adopt the official agenda.
I make a motion to adopt the official agenda.
Have a motion, a second, to adopt the official agenda. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. There being none, motion carried unanimously. At this time, I will call on comments from our public officials. We have, uh, our distinguished probate judge here, Mr. Ben Bowden. Would you care to comment anything?
No, sir, thank you, Dave.
We also have the distinguished sheriff, Mr. Dennis Meeks. Would you care to comment?
I'm good, I'm not, thank you.
Okay. I don't see any others. Okay, thank you. At this time, we will move into the part of the agenda to have comments from the public and on the, first, I will call on Ms. Ann Neese to address the board and would you please come to the mic?
Now, I'm gathering it's all set up so that all I do, have to do is talk, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, first of all, thank you very much for allowing me to come and speak to you. I, um, had a problem with a dam being broken and it washed all, bunches of my property away. Mr. Elmore was about it and I was most upset in the beginning. People didn't seem to understand that my property had been truly destroyed. And they were not terribly interested in trying to help me. But Mr. Elmore came and looked at it and was able to get some help from all, I guess, all you guys and I wanted to say thank you very much for that. I also wanted to ask that I know we're accustomed to doing business in the same way. We've done it this way forever. I was in a job where, um, I had all these people who worked for me and, um, the people who did not work for me, but we had our, our meeting, like you guys do. And one day, my division needed a change, so I had asked my boss about it and we get in there and I ask, you know, can we change our meeting date because I had operations and we needed to have that meeting before the day they were having it. The first thing out of one of the guy's mouths was, but it's always been on Thursday. So what I'm trying to say is, I'm available if, if there's anything that I can do to spread the word on a change. What can we do? How can we do to begin thinking outside the box? Because what happened is they broke that dam all at one time. It was a lot of water came down there. You saw it. And, um, I find that there are other ways to do some of these things. We just have to figure out how to do it and I want you all to know, every one of you, that I am available to sit down, talk with anybody, to try and help improve our whole situation, our whole building, where we are and what we want to do next.
Who is they that broke the dam?
They being the county.
County? I don't, I didn't know nothing about this. I'm in the dark.
Mr. Capps?
Beaver Dam.
Yes, it, what it is.
Beaver Dam?
Beaver Dam.
Beaver Dam.
Beaver Dam, bad.
I built a, a dam inside a pipe.
Right.
Above upstream. And it was built up and backed up pretty good bit and it was threatening to cross the road. So they had to go in and use it with a stick or a log and kinda break it. But you can't control when you're in a pipe, you know, you try to break it and when it goes, it goes, I mean, that's just.
Well, and I'm sorry for interrupting.
And it is restricted by the pipe size.
I understand that, but.
You know, it's not gonna like, it's not like a big wall and you break the wall and it all gushes out. It's still gotta come through the pipe, which it did.
But they're so, they're, they're huge, so a lot of water came out really fast for a long time, but.
What kinda damage did it do to your property?
It inundated it with water. Um, it has, I had a beaver dam and, um, two beaver dams, one beside each side of the road. The problem was that I knew nothing about it, so I couldn't get out there and try and could have, had I been notified earlier. So I think that's part of the thing that we need to remember is that there are people out there who may be affected and the guy don't know if these are the same guys that break that dam you know, whenever it needs to be broken. That's the first time I've seen them break it on that side. They normally are on the other side of the road. And for whatever reason, the gush was, has never been quite so bad. But they asked me, you know, what can we do? Or it's like, it was almost like it was not the county's fault. Now, let me ask you, if I damage your property, who's at fault? Anybody got an answer?
Let, let me interject this right, uh, at this point. I think maybe in the future that what we may need to do is for the county road department, Mr. Capps, is to, if we know we got beavers in the area, that those particular things are checked on a very periodic basis so that the water buildup does not get so big that, that it's broken before you get such a volume of water.
I believe the superintendent met with you and explained that we would try to keep a closer eye on that particular dam so that it doesn't get higher before we break it and, uh,
Yes, sir. He, he did, but at the same time, in that explanation, there was nothing that said we hadn't, we, the county has a responsibility to you, Ms. Neese, um, because we did this to your property. Now, since then, thank goodness for Mr. Elmore, he has worked with whoever he's worked with, I don't know, and at this point, we're in a much better position. We're trying to, um, catch beavers, we being me, and, uh, we have talked with, um, Chris. He came down and, and he said, what can we do and what do you want? I said, I'd like my property back the way it was. It won't be because there's too many trees been down. But what we are doing is that we're gonna take until the first of January, um, and catch as many beavers as we can, do what we can to try and eliminate some of that. At that time, I'm supposed to call him and we are gonna get together to see what it's like and what he can do. I realize that there are things that, um, will never be the same because the trees won't grow back or, or won't grow back for a long time. And a, a lot of, um, instead of just the beaver dam we had, there's a beaver dam way across over here and over there and you saw it, so you could tell where they were. Um, my situation is that, um, I happen to be single, uh, but I have friends and I could've gotten that broken, so my, it would please me if you break it often, but that I know when you're gonna break it, so I can look at what's going on on my property. And that way, maybe we can avoid some of this.
We'll try to do that and, uh, Darren, I'm sure it been broken many a time before and nobody been notified has not had this problem. So this is a problem arise now. We'll try to address this problem and try to let you know, Ms. Neese, what we need to do when we're gonna break the dam.
And I appreciate that very much. Um, i- i- can I ask to see Mr. Darren Capps after the meeting? What time do y'all finish?
After, after the meeting.
Okay. Otherwise, I may have to call you. Um, but anyway, I appreciate your listening and I know that there's a, like I said before, and I know my time's probably up, um, let's think out of the box just a little bit. We've always done it that way and that's why I explained to you about the people who worked, uh, with me and the other division, divisions. They'd always done it that way, but sometimes there's another way. Could be a better way.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming in and sharing, sharing your views with us and we'll take that under consideration.
Thank you very much for having me.
I would like, Mr. Chairman, to say one thing.
Go.
Uh, we have started building a cage with some metal framework to put over the pipes we had a problem with where they build in it. From inlet and outlet side, we just put one out two days ago. So if that works, that'll help control, I mean, we could break, as long as it's not built in the pipe, you can kinda control the amount of water. But once it gets in the pipe, you, you have no idea. You're blindfolded, just, you know, putting a log through it so you can't control what you break on it, so. We are, we are thinking out of the box in that aspect. Something you.
There's a challenge anyway, isn't there?
Right.
Move on.
Uh, this time, I'll call on Mr. Buster Boyd to make his remarks.
Well, good morning, Chairman Godwin and Commissioners. My name is Walter Buster Boyd. I go by Buster over here because it expresses my personality a little better and there's confusion, confusion with a few other Walter Boyd's around. One lawyer, it, uh, it goes by Walter Boyd too and he gets into more ethical problems than I do and he embarrasses me. But let me, uh, Chairman Godwin, what a pleasure. Thank you for your courtesy. And Ms. South, did you know, I, I called and I had to wait a long time because she was on, on the phone with the constituents helping, helping this. Maybe it was you that she was helping, I don't know, but I found out she told me I'm sort of related to her. Did you know that, Judge?
I don't know if I'd publicize that or not.
No, well, I, I embarrasses her, but I'm honored, Ms. South. Thank you for your courtesy. And oh, Lord, oh, my gosh, I enjoyed y'all's, uh, it wasn't the debates, it was five-minute speeches, but I may, I think I'm gonna moderate a debate between you and your opponent, both of whom I find are really honorable and wonderful people. But I haven't made my decision, so I know you'll show up because you wouldn't dare to, uh, not do that. But anyway, it's gonna be a good one, I think. Oh, Judge Fowden, no, my Lord, when I see a Baptist preacher, a judge, I just got so upset. Oh, Lord, I've had it out with him, have I, Judge Bowden? Have I or not? I'll speak for him. He's a little timid when he's not on the bench over there, but, uh, oh, goodness sakes. Well, I just wanna say these three-minute speeches, Ms. Neese and I were talking about, thank you, I'm also, I'm also single, Ms. Neese.
Let's keep this conversation germane to the subject, okay?
Well, okay, uh, Commissioner, I've gotten into a little trouble in these three-minute speeches, would you believe it, but there is a purpose for these speeches.
You got about thirty seconds left.
Yeah, well, can I have that bell that you had over at the college?
It don't ring loud enough.
Well, all right. Well, I just wanted to tell you that we're gonna do a lot of Joe Baristas and there's gonna maybe a lot of cultural events and, and Ms. Neese, I did, I've been coming over to Andalusia for, for ten, uh, fifty years, a half a century, and I don't find anything's ever changed. So, I mean, it's, it's pretty much the same. But Judge, I mean, Commissioner Godwin, thank you and Commissioners, thank, thank you. And whenever I'm in trouble with beavers, you know who I'm gonna call?
Engineer.
No, I'm gonna call Judge Bowden to put an executive order out on it. Thank you so much.
Well, thank, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Under our business, we have a pending board appointment, Ms. South.
Yes, Mr. Arlen Davis has, uh, applied for reappointment to the Southeast Regional, um, SEARP and DC Board. And it was, actually, we did not have anyone respond last month, so this is carried over from, from that appointment.
And, uh, I assume this is our applicant we have?
Yes, sir. It is the only person that has applied.
There is. This, uh, Mr. Arlen Davis desires to be reappointed. What's the pleasure of the board?
I make a motion we reappoint him.
Second.
I have a motion, second, Mr. Arlen Davis to be reappointed. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. There being none, motion carried unanimously. We'll move into the new business. First, we'll consider approval of the minutes, uh, of November eighteen, two thousand and fifteen. I believe those were emailed to all the commissioner and also placed in your box, uh, for review before the meeting. Uh, I have personally reviewed them and, uh, I would recommend that we approve them.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
I have a second that we approve.
Second.
Mr. Elmore, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. There being none, motion carried unanimously. Our next item is to consider accounts payable and payroll totals for November two thousand and fifteen. Ms. South, is there anything out of the ordinary?
No, sir. You can see those titles on page three.
It's not as bad as it has been. Still bad.
Do I have a motion that we?
I make a motion we adopt this accounts payable.
Second.
I have a second, motion second, to, uh, approve the accounts payable and payroll totals for November two thousand and fifteen. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. There being none, motion carried unanimously. We have a vacancy on the Covenant County Water Authority. Mr. Ralph Rutherford, uh, made contact with me and said that he desired to, uh, resign from the board for health reasons. He had a very serious operation year about two weeks ago and he said it was gonna be a long, uh, recovery period and he just felt like it was best for the board that, that he resigned. And so, um, just to let y'all know that, so we're making an announcement that that position is open for, for someone to be appointed to it and, uh, we appreciate the news media helping us to get that out. I have had, already had two inquiries about that appointment, so ma- uh, and we did, uh, make contact with the water authority to make sure that this would not put them in a situation where they cannot operate with one vacancy on the board. There's only three members of that board. And I believe, Ms. South, you talked to Ms.
I did speak with Ms. Deborah at the Water Authority and she said it would be okay for us to, uh, appoint in January.
That's, that's for your information. The next item is consider county membership in the National Association of Counties, uh, Ms. South.
Uh, yes, sir. This is just the annual membership dues that are, are come up to be paid, seven hundred fifty-five dollars and, uh, that will cover us from January of sixteenth or December thirty-first of sixteen.
Make a motion we continue our membership.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, second, that we continue our membership in NACO. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. There being none, motion carried unanimously. Next is to consider our holiday schedule for fiscal year sixteen. We have what we have here. Uh, there was some we would like to, some commission members would like to have time to, to review and see if we possibly need to make some changes depending on what day a holiday falls within the week to, for that. So, uh, but we do need to do something in, for as New Year's Day is, to have that official. So what's the pleasure of the board?
I would make a motion that we go ahead and set a holiday schedule for New Years and take the rest of them up after our meeting in January.
Is this the proposal right here?
That, that is what's in effect right now. But I was looking at the calendar to see where those holidays fail, that we might could do something to be more convenient for the employees.
Okay.
And so, we have a motion to go ahead and approve at least New Years because that would be before our next meeting and then we'll try to get something put together.
I also would like to remind you that, um, we have two different holiday schedules. One is for the four-day-a-week employees and the other is for the Monday through Friday employees. So we would need to make sure that we, um, keep that in mind whenever y'all make a recommendation for New Years.
Without a calendar.
Okay.
Will we need to, um, look at any other dates in January?
January first is on a Friday, so the Monday through Thursday employees would need to be granted, I guess, the thirty-first or either, wha- whatever y'all choose to do with them, but they would need a day other than that.
Yeah.
Would you, Mr. Capps, would you think they would prefer the, uh, thirty-first?
For the holiday.
For the holiday, so, uh, with that, uh.
A meeting in January, will it gonna come after the, uh, Martin Luther King?
It'd actually be the week before, the thirteenth.
Be middle of January and I'd have come on twenty-first or whenever.
Uh, New Years, New Years is the only day that we need to get approved prior to adopting a schedule for the whole year. Mr. Barton has made a motion that we approve January one as a holiday with the, with the, with the county road department taking, uh, the thirty-first and a little of that. Uh, do I have a second for that?
I'll second that.
We got a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. There being none, motion carried unanimously. At this time, we will take some, I'm going to, uh, go to the staff next to, uh, if anyone has, on staff has a concern they wish to, or comment they wish to make to the board at this time.
Yes, sir. Uh, you know, every year, the state DOT comes and grades our payrolls and, uh, this year, we got our grade back and it's, uh, come at, uh, four tenths higher than it was last year from, uh, ninety-two point six to ninety-three point oh-four. So I like to praise all our workers for a good job they're doing on the payrolls. It's in, ranks in the top five of the state.
Well, that's good.
Unofficially.
I can say this. You go to a lot of our neighboring counties and you, you respect what we got. You know, ours is, we think, some people say they're not as well as they ought to be, but they just need to go somewhere else and see how their, how other roads are and, uh, in some of their conditions, their bridges and stuff, it, it does make a difference.
I'd like to ask, uh, Mr. Kennedy to comment on the status of the jail additions.
Mr. Chairman, I met with the architect yesterday. He did a, uh, a walk-through yesterday and made a few notes. Gonna get with Bay South, I'll type a letter and send to Bay South about the few findings that he had. Gonna give them until the twentieth to be completely finished. There's a few items that are very minor, some paint, uh, labeling. Asked me if I could take care of those, that he would just ask, uh, uh, an amount. He was gonna get with the bonding company, ask for an amount to refund us or to, you know, that, not to charge us for some, um, small corrections that we could take care of here. Uh, there's one door that Cornerstone has to come back and fix and he was gonna require that they send Cornerstone back to fix that door. Everything else is very minor, cosmetic almost. Um, they're going, give them to the twentieth, twentieth of December for the final inspection. Haven't set the final inspection, but he's giving them until the twentieth to be completely done with the jail. That's as of yesterday afternoon.
I believe, I believe part of our, uh, problems has been the, uh, subcontractors not being paid on time and they, they would not come back and finish the work because they hadn't got paid for the work.
That's my understanding and the subcontractors that I've dealt with directly have had that problem, I know. And that's my understanding is the reason they haven't been back. And Patrick said he was gonna insist that of the payments be made to these subcontractors and the work be completed and give them until the twentieth.
Is that Bay South paying the subcontractor?
That was the problem. Bay South not paying the subcontractors in a timely manner. The subcontractors had, the ones that had had ninety percent or so completion and just had a few little things, haven't gotten paid in months for what they've turned in, so they were upset and wouldn't come back. Um, I think that is in the process of being corrected. Patrick assured me it was gonna be pressed, um, this week and the, until the twentieth to be completed.
Let the, let the record reflect that Patrick is the architect, representative of architectural firm, so we'll be clear as to who we are referencing. Uh, Mr. Meeks?
Uh, we're gonna deal with Glenn's something with Bay South now for a year. That should've been done for a long time yet. I understand Patrick's giving them to the twentieth and all that. I'm gonna be real surprised if Glenn does anything different what he's been doing. So what is gonna be the, uh, what are they gonna do there after the twin? If nothing is done, is there some kind of plans that are placed? Does the county have to pay the subcontractors and then turn around and say, but what?
I, I'm going, I'm going, I could call my county attorney. I, I believe the law does not permit us to pay subcontractors.
So what's gonna, what's, so what's gonna be the plan?
The bonding company.
I'm gonna be real surprised if he does anything different.
Let me, let's hear, let's listen to our county attorney.
I'm not real familiar with the situation, but you know, if there's a, there's a bonding company, there's a bond there that you can call in if they don't perform up to the standards of their contract and they don't do what they're supposed to do. That's something that we would just need to check into.
Just personally speaking, I'd go ahead and be good in that. I know the bonding company has, I mean, Patrick with the architect has already contacted the bonding company and they are aware of the problems and so have some of the subcontractors. So what we're talking about is actually in place already to an extent. Uh, like I said, it's so minor, um, I could probably, if Cornerstone was sending the part to that door, it's the wrong striker plate. I could change it and really and truly it's functional, but we just need the substantial completion.
What you're asking about, what little bit needs to be done?
We can look at the maintenance to do.
Let, let me suggest this. Let's go to the twentieth of the month. If things are not resolved, then I'm, I'm gonna suggest that our county attorney write a letter to the bonding company to explain our situation, see if we can get resolution to. Is that?
Well, what I would like to do is let's go to the twentieth and then I can get with Kevin and see what's already been done and, and what plans have made, been made. If the bonding company's already on notice, you know, I would just need to contact them and go from there.
Uh, uh, depending on verbally, but I think having written documents that we
Yes, sir.
would be very helpful. Uh, I will just go ahead and say this. We, the, the commissions probably should have insisted on a finish date with a penalty if it was not and that was not in the contract and I'm sorry that we, we did not have that and, uh, it was mentioned to the architarians for various reasons. It was decided not to do that. Uh, uh, hope we don't have another one of these, but if we do, I think we'll have something in place to be sure.
It'll be done different.
It'd be done different, something. That's it. Uh, uh, Mr. Kennedy, what about the alternate, uh, two and three position? Be as far as the, uh, security cameras and the monitoring stations. How far along are we on that with MTA?
They're about ninety-five percent complete. Waiting on the part and they should be complete once they get the part. Expected this week, um, probably next week be completed.
Okay, uh, thank you. Uh, does any of the other staff have any comments? If not, I'll ask for comments from the board.
I'd like to make a comment. Chairman, I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, New Years and a safe one. And, uh, we know what kinda shape our country in and people coming over here are taking advantage and it's, we in a serious situation with that going on and I just wish everybody to keep praying and all have a safe Christmas and Happy New Years. That's all I have to say.
That's me. I would, I wanna, you know, wish everyone a happy holiday season, you know, uh, got quite a bit coming up and, uh, like people to get out, you know, and support this county in every way they can. Uh, there's a lot going on that could, you know, entertain your families. Uh, we appreciate what all the, the towns are doing and trying to get people out. Uh, that means a lot. It means a lot, you know, to Covenant County, uh, not just one person, uh. So I, I thank that. I thank all the workers, uh, throughout the county, all the employees, all they do and the time they spend on their jobs and studying their job, doing what they're supposed to do. Appreciate that. Appreciate everything, uh. So with that, you know, I just hope their family has a wonderful week, you know, Christmas time off and their times and enjoy themselves.
If there's no other comments, I'll, uh, entertain a motion that we adjourn.
I make a motion we adjourn, Chairman. All in favor, aye.
Just, just a, a reminder that we have a workshop immediately following this. We'll take about a ten-minute break before we start the workshop. Um, meeting stands adjourned.